Call tonight's September twenty-third, twenty thousand nineteen, uh, two thousand nineteen. Uh, regular work, work, work way ahead. Uh, where we in that order? Uh, Mr. Newlock?
Here.
Ms. Kalamowski?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Vice President Darrow?
Here.
President McCollum?
Here. Please stand.
Hi, President. It's the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, on the nation, and our God, indivisible, with the rotating justice of God.
To approval of word minutes, we have the August twelfth, twenty-sixth, board meeting minutes. Um, there are no corrections or additions. Uh, cut up motion second to approve. Ms. Kalamowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Newlock?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes.
And now to tonight's agenda, any additions correct? There was none, five in motion for tonight's agenda. So, Mr. Darrow, second?
Second.
Mr. Bush, roll call please. Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalamowski?
Yes.
Mr. Newlock?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes.
Uh, our first item tonight is a public hearing. Uh, the purpose of this hearing is to provide opportunity for the public comment on the new Albany Plainland School District Board of Education to potentially consider a request for reemployment as coordinator of custodial maintenance and grounds from retired employee White Strickly. Mr. Sawyer, any further information?
Um, this is a requirement for central Ohio advice code when an individual wishes to forego their sixty days leave from the school district and return to a position exactly the same. Mr. Strickly has been a longtime asset to our school district, is in a unique position that understands all operational things related to the quality plan of the schools, and I strongly recommend we consider his reemployment post-retirement.
Uh, anyone from the audience wishing to speak? All right. Can you please explain more about this, or just?
Well, I don't, I don't need to know anything, but this is one of those things that comes up periodically that is frequently reported in a way that is not particularly accurate. So, this is the, what's often reported as a retire be-hire, and it's, again, often reported as being more expensive for government agencies, and it's not. Uh, this is an individual who is retiring from his current position and is retiring because of the terms of retirement. That's just how the system works, and we are reemploying him at the same rate for the same expense and retaining the, um, all of the advantages of all of this individual's experience. We evaluate each one of these circumstances individually, and we make sure that it is in the best interest of the district and it is in the best interest of the school district. So, want to make it clear.
I think retirement is something he earned, whether he worked for us again or not. So, he's not getting anything in addition except for clean.
As of December thirty-first, so thirty-one point two-five years of retirement system, and he's eligible for retirement. He's just choosing not to retire. He wants to continue working, and rather than going to local unemployment, leaving us with a huge vacancy in our school district, he was interested in coming back. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Moving on to communications, uh, first item is superintendent's items. Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you, President McCollum. Um, the majority of my conversations, safety section of our discussion items, were the local report card in the two thousand nineteen, twenty continuous improvement plan. However, I would like to invite Mr. Hood to the podium, um, to provide a help of service announcement and solicit the continued support of our families based upon a recent event or two that have taken place in our school district. Um, Mr. Hood, the Director of Student Services and Safety and Security, Mr. Hood?
It's good evening, everyone. I wanted just to take the opportunity to make sure that the board's well informed. Uh, we did have a safety-related incident in the past week related to a student on a bicycle being hit by a student driver in their car. Uh, there were no injuries reported at that incident. It took place at the, uh, the six oh five and Cardulus intersection, uh, right at the beginning of the school day. So, first of all, I just wanted to make sure that you are well informed that that incident took place. It was responded to, um, just in exceptional manner by our city police department, fire department. Uh, the building administrators responded remarkably well. Uh, and so from just sort of a crisis kind of standpoint, letting you know our crisis kind of management model is well in place and served well in that situation. Uh, it did spur us, though, to, um, send an email out immediately that just made sure, one, that the community had a very accurate description of what took place because there were misconceptions within the community as to what took place there. And then we also gave just kind of encouragement for families to support us well by having conversations at home about traveling to and from school safely. Um, I've got a passion around safety personally that you guys know well, but we do consider this travel from school, from home to school and the travel from school back to home, all as part of schools. And so, uh, we take this very seriously, and, uh, that email generated a, um, incredible amount of response from the community, uh, sharing, uh, both their support, uh, what they've currently seen already, just in terms of our safety protocols, and then also recommendations as to what they consider as things that we could be doing. Everything that they gave me in terms of information that was related to the city, I forwarded on to the city so that the city would know exactly what the community was saying. Uh, the police department is fully informed of any concerns that our parents have or that would involve the police department as well. The things that are district-related that came up, making you aware that we have a district safety committee meeting taking place this Wednesday that has the chief of police, the fire chief, and representations from all of our buildings coming to the administration building. I'll be sharing a number of things that the community expressed, uh, just so our district safety committees are aware of things that they have. Uh, some of them are, uh, really strong thoughtful comments that I think are, are valuable. And so, I'm letting you know that there's been a very open dialogue with the community, including, uh, a number of parents come to speak with me personally, uh, and with the superintendent, the treasurer today even. So, letting you know that that incident, as unfortunate as it was, um, has spurred us into just deeper conversation, uh, getting really good information as to how we can best support. Uh, Patrick's been, uh, great in helping follow it up now with some things you'll be seeing coming shortly, which are, uh, a video of our own students talking about bike safety, highlighting like the five top things you need to know about bike safety in coming to school. There's a national flyer that the superintendent has shared that's around bike safety, safety that you'll see coming out in an email as well. So, you're gonna be seeing just sort of this response to us that says, okay, when a moment like that has happened, uh, we want to make sure that we're keeping everyone well informed and just, and just pushing forward, uh, towards a greater level of safety. I will say this, uh, I've only been here a year, so I don't have a lot of experience to go on what we looked like before, but our bicycle racks are overwhelmingly full to the point that we're gonna be have to make recommendations for more bike racks. So, I do think that we have more people on bikes, on skateboards, walking than probably the district has ever had in the past, if I just look at what kind of resources we have to help house that equipment. I want to partner that with, we've had a remarkable number of comments from the community too about what they would consider to be sort of reckless travel from our students. So, students who are in the middle of the street, maybe on a skateboard, or students who aren't following crosswalk safety, um, students who are in disregard of moving cars, uh, things like that. So, um, we're taking all of that into account, that the communication that you're gonna be seeing coming out is our attempt to address those concerns and to take what we know that we've seen in the last few days and, uh, just really provide parents with as much information as we can, understanding there's this kind of strange balance between what we can be doing as a district and trying to do all we can, and parents taking responsibility to say, I have to make sure I'm having these conversations with my children about how do you, how do you go to school safely and come home safely? Uh, so, just letting you know, wanting to keep you well informed of, make it blaze. Um, I have a high level of comfort about all that we're doing, uh, and I also just sort of genuinely want you to know that we're taking every single parent comment very seriously, really looking at it as, is this a valuable thing that we can potentially use to draw us into greater safety as a district? So, just an update from me.
Appreciate that. Is there, is there anything you can tell us right now about the conversations you have with the city and what they may be doing?
Uh, well, I've been having almost like, uh, weekly conversations with the city since I've been here, so, uh, I'm letting you know with the Rose Run project, the parent concerns have been expressed around, uh, roundabouts, uh, traveling down, uh, Dublin, Grandville, those are things that we're just in constant confirmation or constant conversation about. I'm letting you know that the city is remarkably responsible, from my perspective, remarkably responsible. So, this is, this incident takes place on Cardulus, uh, Superintendent Sawyer's contacts the city to say that this incident's happened. Within minutes, literally, there's stop signs on the bike path at Cardulus. That's been my experience with the city so far. Every time I've given them something that they can act on quickly, they're right there doing it as fast, as fast as they can. They're very conscientious, uh, about what the community's saying about traffic flow, uh, concerns around safety. Uh, if I contact, and I can even name names, in fact, I think if the folks that I call, they are not just deleting my email, they're, they're coming in and doing something about it almost immediately. Same thing's true of the, of the, both the police department and fire department. Very quick responses, uh, and very passionate to make sure they're serving our children well.
So, to John's example, we've requested the city install where it's appropriate around the school campus on the bike paths, the miniature stop signs that perhaps you've seen at Thompson Road Park, um, dominantly is where you see them the most, actually at Cardulus Way and perhaps in a couple other spots, um, at the end of bike paths that cross the roadway, um, to make sure kids understand that you do have a responsibility on the bicycle to yield to the car traffic, you do not have the right of way. So, we have to continue, and the buildings have done a wonderful job. There's daily announcements that have been created related to bike safety to try to help kids understand their responsibilities, but at the same time, we're trying to educate the parents to make sure they understand the responsibility to talk about it at home. The other thing we're reinforcing at the city's request is the bike helmet law. Does the city ordinance you are required to wear a helmet when riding a bicycle? Um, we get the question very often about, am I required to wear the helmet when on my skateboard? The city ordinance does not apply to skateboards, but we are strongly recommending to families that if your child is on a skateboard or a scooter, he or she should also be wearing the bike helmet.
One other quick thing, um, earlier this week, several of us had the opportunity to go into the city community update, and I know that, um, I think this for everybody's knowledge, there, there have been plenty of discussions about traffic and what it looks like in the village center, even to the point where there's discussion now about extending some roads to kind of move traffic away from the center. So, it's just something to point out is that, in addition to the things that the city is doing, they're also just generally looking at, at traffic, um, around the village center, and they've been very good partners in a number of ways.
Matter of fact, I personally met with those city planners to make sure that they are well informed from a school's perspective as to how that all potentially could flow in the future.
I do think we need parents to partner with us on this. I, you know, one example is, I see so many kids without helmets on bikes and, you know, I'm enforcing it with my son, and it's hard when none of his friends are wearing helmets. So, we almost need a culture of like, it's not a question, you put your helmet on. And, and just things like that where parents can really help us if they reinforce some of the messages that we're trying to sell to students. Um, another thing is when they have the ear pods in and they're in traffic, they really can't hear any traffic noise.
Yeah.
Um, so there's, I feel like maybe there's some messaging that can go back to parents too on how they can help us.
Yeah. It's interesting you mention that. I received a lot of responses. I haven't actually counted them, but it wouldn't surprise me, but it's somewhere close to a hundred responses to this email that went out. I'd say about a third of those responses mentioned, kind of like we have distracted driving with our cars, mentioned this sort of distracted travel with kids with earphones, ear pods, looking at their phone while they're riding their bike, things like that that they have as a great concern, uh, that I think if parents could be partnering with us at a high level, we could make a difference out of this.
We'll continue to talk about it with school resource officers and Chief Jones has been very proactive, as well as with the city through John's conversations. We'll bring it up to the safety meeting, but perhaps there's another thing that the city did do a temporary piece through the police boards that you got a warning, um, when we first went to the ordinance for bike helmets. Um, I don't know if that's been done recently, but it probably needs to be resurrected because I agree with you, there are kids in the community riding bikes without helmets. So, that may be something else that we ask, could they resurrect the program that they did when they first passed the ordinance and actually repeat it now, given the fact that you've got two incidents in the last week?
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you.
Next is an update from Clee, and we have, uh, Jackie Locker here today.
Clee, good evening. Greetings from the high school. Hello.
Hello. Good evening.
Um, so, as stated, I'm Jackie Locker from the high school, and, uh, short and sweet this evening because we've all been busy getting our classrooms ready and starting the year off with the bang. Um, Ryan Whitekurt, an absolutely incredible human being and school nurse, uh, he completed his postmaster's nurse practitioner certification, and, you know, that wasn't quite enough, he went on and he actually passed his national board certification this summer, so yay, Ryan. Um, also Christina Pratt, uh, one of our third grade teachers, she is now the president of the Central Ohio Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Uh, so that is just a great way for New Albany to be involved with all the big changes happening in the world of math now, being leaders that we are. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion like this tonight, we're liaising reports and everything to report. Nothing? I will move on to Mr. Sawyer for an update and a discussion on the twenty nineteen local report card and the twenty-nine twenty, to approve that.
Thank you, President McCollum. Um, Board of Education members, this evening we're to continue our review of the final data that was available from the Ohio Department of Education that we previously have talked about at previous Board of Education meetings and put in the context of the report publicly on our accountability for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen, um, continuous improvement plan, as well as recommendations for specific goals for the two thousand nineteen-twenty benchmarks, um, for our district. Um, so as the board will recall, we have a commitment to excellence within our school district, um, and in a broad level to summarize it, um, our goal by September twenty-twenty-three is to be ranked in the top ten or higher of all public school districts across the state of Ohio for academic achievement as publicly reported by the Ohio Department of Education based upon the performance index ranking, which is actually the academic achievement of students on the standardized test required by the state of Ohio. Um, this past year, our goal was to specifically move from number nineteen to number seventeen within all public school districts in the state, and I'm very happy to publicly report, as parents have seen in all my communications, that it's a huge celebration for our school district that we did in fact do that. We are ranked number seventeen statewide out of the six hundred and eight public school districts across the state, um, based upon the continued effort by faculty, staff, administrators, parents, students, and everyone involved in our entire organization to actually ascertain the achievement level.
Mr. Sawyer?
Yes.
Before you move on, I think we should all publicly acknowledge and congratulate everyone, so, I'm standing.
This is a big deal. It is a big deal. It's really hard, and you're gonna see as we progress through this, um, presentation tonight why it is so hard. Um, fractions to decimal points can matter and rankings for the state, but more importantly, it's increasing the academic achievement of kids in our school district to demonstrate that they actually can score or perform at higher levels and reach greater outcomes than other districts across the state. Um, and that takes deliberate daily effort, um, by everyone in our school district to help them actually achieve that. So, commendations really to everyone across the entire school district at large. So, um, the report card comes out, and I'm just gonna run you through, um, the component grades information specifically to the report card. We received a B on the achievement level, um, and ultimately it's based upon a hundred and six of the hundred and twenty possible points for the performance index specifically, and then the number of indicators met for twenty-two out of twenty-four. That translates into, these are the specific indicators that are required, um, for academic achievement in the various grade levels from grades three through the non-tested areas, um, beyond the high school for end-of-course exams. I'm not gonna read them individually, we've talked about these. Um, the district has met the indicators with the exception of two red Xs, um, one being sixth grade English Language Arts, the other being seventh grade Mathematics, and you'll hear the specific intervention plans that we have in place for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year to ensure that we continue to progress forward and meet those expectations. Um, the gifted indicator overall, um, for us is actually extremely strong. Um, for us as a school district, we are one of the fifty school districts across the entire state of Ohio to meet the gifted indicator. We're one of thirty-three districts to meet the gifted indicator and receive an A for the gifted value-added component. We're the only Franklin County school district that met the gifted indicator, um, this current school year for two thousand eighteen-nineteen public reporting. Um, our gifted performance index is actually the ninth highest in the state of Ohio, which demonstrates extremely high, um, expectations for students to perform at the gifted level, um, in our school district, um, and it is the highest gifted PI in all of Franklin County. So, we did extremely well for helping to enrich and take kids deeper, um, for those higher levels of content across all academic areas in our school district in grades three through twelve that include the end-of-course exams at the high school. So, this is actually a huge celebration for us as a school district, it shows continued growth. Even if you are a high achieving student, you actually can excel and increase your outcomes on a daily basis, um, that we would expect that you have both in the classroom and then in your performance on the actual standardized assessments for the state. Um, the performance index, I'm gonna go back one, maybe. Hey, Patrick, we gotta go backwards. My keyboard's not working. There it goes. Performance index. So, this is very important as well, and we had this conversation with Board of Education members individually or collectively where we talked about the increase of actual academic achievement year over year. So, when you go back to two thousand fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, our performance index score was ninety-seven point eight. You were ranked number sixty-fourth in the state of Ohio. And then progressively, when you come to two thousand eighteen-nineteen, you can see we've increased the academic achievement levels for outcomes expected for kids to be one hundred and six of the one hundred and twenty possible points to earn the rating of number seventeen statewide. So, the district's made an eight point two point increase in performance index since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Overall decrease in the percentage of students scoring the limit in basic performance level bands has happened and contributed to that rise in overall academic achievement, increasing overall percentages of students scoring proficient and above for the third year in a row. So, this demonstrates that clearly the statement of purpose, continuity of focus, the deliberate intention to curriculum assessment instruction, and the daily activities that are happening that are systemically aligned to provide a guaranteed and viable curriculum across our entire school district, joined with outstanding teaching in the classroom, um, administrative leadership support, and then the supports of our non-teaching faculty or staff, um, in our organization are clearly having an impact. And you'll see that when I get to the bullseye in a few minutes, um, but that is really the why, the how, and the what of what's being achieved in our school district, and this is an incredible story to tell, um, when you look at the actual levels of student achievement that are occurring across the entire school district. So, when you look at the top twenty-five, because I often get asked, who do you compare yourselves to? Um, these are this year's summary tables that were released by the Ohio Department of Education, they're available on their website, they'll be available in the presentation. Um, Solon remains the number one school district in the state, and it's still our aspiration that we're going to exceed them. Um, the day will come that we too shall conquer Solon, who sat in that throne for a very, very long time, um, but we will overcome them because our kids can and will. So, we're number seventeen in the state, you can see the sixteen school districts that are ranked ahead of us, and then it also gives you their current enrollment. The school districts that are in red are compared to be similar school districts, so those are the ones the state of Ohio identifies from socioeconomic standing dominantly and makeup of the community that are most like us regardless of student enrollment. So, you can see Chagrin Falls, number three in the state, has one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two kids, but is in red. Compared to Solon, it has four thousand five hundred and nineteen, and we ended the school year with four thousand nine hundred and thirty-one kids publicly reported. So, it shows you their expenditure per pupil, their rankings historically for seventeen-eighteen as well as sixteen-seventeen in their year-over-year comparisons. Um, but again, we are number seventeen statewide and did show the academic expectation and fulfill the outcomes that were required for us as a school district. The Ohio Department of Education also reports on spending and performance, so this is their version of the scatter plot that illustrates expenditures per pupil. Our expenditure per pupil was eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Um, so if you drill into this, and I'm not going to do that tonight, you can actually go into specific similar school districts, comparison districts versus all districts. I'm gonna specifically do it for Franklin County, um, just to show you data specifically for local school districts that surround us, but you can drill into this information through the department. But our expenditure per pupil for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year that we publicly reported that the department computed was eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars. So, when you look at Franklin County, um, these are the results specifically for Franklin County, as I had referenced, that we were gonna drill into, um, and as you can see, we're one of thirty-one school districts, um, in the state of Ohio to earn an overall letter grade of an A. It's the second year in a row that the, um, overall letter grade has been reported, and we're very fortunate that this is the second year that we've earned the overall A. We're one of two school districts in Franklin County that actually did earn the overall grade of an A on the local report card. Um, only two, only in Franklin County school districts, um, we are the one that has the two consecutive A ratings, um, so we are very fortunate in that respect, both on the two thousand eighteen-nineteen and seventeen-eighteen local report cards. You can also see expenditures per pupil for surrounding school districts in Franklin County and how we compare. We're eleven thousand two ninety-one. Um, comparatively, the ones I get asked most often about are Upper Arlington at thirteen thousand five forty-seven per pupil. Um, I get asked about Dublin, um, specifically, um, at ten thousand nine twenty, but you also have to remember they're three times our size, they have fifteen thousand, almost sixteen thousand kids in the Dublin City Schools now, um, for comparison purposes. And then the most expensive in Franklin County is Grandview Heights, um, which also earned an AM local report card, thousand fifty-seven kids for fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars per pupil. But it gives you some context of honestly, um, academic outcomes that are being produced and the value for our taxpayers based upon the expenditure per pupil, and that's the purpose of publicly reporting it by the department. So, as we look towards two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty, um, we have to have a spirit of continuous improvement, and that is the expectation amongst the leadership team, as well as really across the entire school district for all faculty and staff. Uh, we've engaged persons across the organization into conversations to talk about what we should expect for two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and it's my recommendation this evening that our benchmark, um, specifically for benchmark number one for increased academic achievement is in relationship to the public reporting on the local report card to be from number seventeen to number sixteen. So, although it's one placeholder in ranking, you will recall on some of the charts I just showed you, um, the higher we climb, you've heard me say, the harder it gets. There's also academic changes that are happening to the local report card by the department this year based upon action by the General Assembly, um, in the budget. So, there is changes being made specifically for ELA one at the high school for end-of-course exam, um, and proposed changes for geometry that will have direct impact to the gifted indicator, we believe, um, at the high school. Um, in addition to that, there's other academic interventions that we're implementing for the first year in our school district that I will talk about in just a couple minutes that are just now being implemented, and we don't understand, because we don't have the data yet, the benchmark impact that they will have, um, for year-over-year comparison until we actually have the first year for benchmarking data this year. So, it is my recommendation, as we look towards two thousand nineteen, twenty, um, we move from number seventeen to number sixteen. To do that, in preschool through sixth, uh, we have to have ongoing implementation for Bridges and Mathematics, as well as the implementation of college preparatory math with fidelity, um, continued implementation of caucum units of study and writing, as well as we're having conversations specifically related to sixth grade reading, given the current benchmark status associated to the academic indicator for this past year. We've been analyzing last year's results, and we've been through the data to be through the data in every way, shape, and form to basically look at it inside and out, um, to help create action plans that are specific to grade level building and subgroup needs. Um, the leadership team actually met for two hours tonight before the Board of Education meeting to talk about this very topic, um, and the action plans that will be created to better meet the needs of kids and help them increase their academic outcomes across our school district because that should be our expectation as a learning organization. We will continue the guaranteed and viable curriculum implementation that includes cognitive, formative, and substantive assessments, as well as robust use of the performance data warehouse, um, for full integration, um, into our school district. At the secondary level, again, it's college preparatory math and specific courses, so unlike the, um, elementary level, these are specifically for Math six, seven, and eight, um, pre-algebra A, pre-algebra B, algebra one, geometry, and then statistics. Those are the courses that we've actually implemented CPM into, um, at the secondary level. Those are the courses that we've actually implemented CPM into at the secondary level or at the middle school level to include end of course. We have targeted math and English language arts during additional lab times that become available for students. We're using Eagle Period and Study Center differently this year to provide additional support for individual students identified. So as an example, I could be identified based upon my progress in a math classroom, that I need additional academic intervention outside of mathematics. And then I would go to the Study Center or either through Eagle Period or have opportunity for additional intervention to be scheduled during the school day or either before school or after school if necessary based upon arrangements with parents. We're developing the action plans very similar to the elementary level with the implementation, again, the guaranteed and viable curriculum that's expected across all grade levels, common formative and substantive assessments, and again, the integration of the data warehouse. So although 17 to 16 is a challenge, we do believe it absolutely is achievable, and our kids can and will perform at higher levels, and that should be our expectation. So benchmark number two is specific to facilitating a year's worth, year or more worth of growth. This past year, our goal was one year's worth or more of growth on the district component of the local report card. This was met in accordance with the standards by the Ohio Department of Education, specifically as the progress measure that looks closely at the growth that all students are making based upon their past performance. So overall, we received an A as a school district in the progress component. Overall, our students received an A, the gifted students, the students in the lowest 20th percentile for the quintile in the state because they're compared against all 20% of the lowest quintile statewide, as well as students with disabilities. So this is, again, outstanding results in our school district to have these high levels of student progress to demonstrate how our kids continue to improve. As we look towards the 2019-20 school year, we are recommending for benchmark number two that we actually increase the expectation, the district component for the state is a C or better. Clearly, based upon what we've demonstrated over the last two years, we think minimally we're capable of a B or better, and we will continue to raise this expectation. But with some of the changes that are happening with the local report card, we're going from a C, which would be the state, a C actually is a year's worth of growth. We're actually expecting more than a year's worth of growth by earning a B. And then once we see what the changes actually unfold for the future, we will continue to look at raising the bar for what we would specifically do there. For benchmark number three, for gap closure, our goal this past year was to earn a B or better. Gap closing is now based on the performance index for each subgroup and whether the subgroup met the performance index goal or increased the performance index from the previous school year. And again, we met this requirement for the state of Ohio. It's actually a wonderful story to be told because when you actually get into the specific subgroups, and I know it's a busy, busy slide, but we look at all students across our school district, Black, Non-Hispanic, Multiracial, Economically Disadvantaged, Students with Disabilities, Asian or Pacific Islander, Hispanic, White, Non-Hispanic, and English Learners. And the data gets disaggregated by English Language Arts, Mathematics, the graduation rate, and then our success with English learners that are involved in academic interventions and enrichment necessary to help them learn English. So when you look at the red dots, those are the state benchmarks that we're required to make, to meet on an annual basis, and it basically does increase for expectation. We far exceed those red dots. But as we dig into the data later, when we talk about things that we will do for continuous improvement, I'll just point out one specific subgroup, and it's Economically Disadvantaged. Our students that are classified as Economically Disadvantaged, that live in poverty every single day in our school district, do struggle. And it's a real struggle, not just in New Albany, but technically in poverty across the entire state of Ohio, and how we're trying to meet the needs of those students. That's one of the areas that I would tell you that we're specifically having very concrete conversations about for the services that are provided to those students beyond the classroom. So we do do things in school, but even beyond the classroom in partnership with our communities and the Albany Food Pantry and other resources that we can connect them with to ensure that they actually have opportunities beyond what's provided at school to help them be successful both at school, at home, and in life. It's not just a New Albany problem. Clearly, poverty is a statewide issue, but people often remark that it's not an issue in New Albany. I will tell you, it is an issue in New Albany. So we do have students who live in poverty in our school district that do require additional supports and services to help him or her be successful at school, and we're very proud to provide those services to help them be successful, as you clearly can see. But it is still an opportunity. So although you see those red dots and those bars far exceeded, when you disaggregate that data and dig into it, it's an opportunity for us to continuously improve within because we're not meeting their absolute needs. And we have to be transparent about that conversation and attack it so that we actually can do something about it to help each individual student as we're charged to do. Same information applies for graduation rate in English language learners. These are the graphs of the red bar charts, the red dots, state requirement, and then clearly where we exceed it based upon the bar chart that actually illustrates our growth for purposes in our school district for gap closure. So although we are doing well, I will tell you, there's always room for continuous improvement, and in this case, in some specific subgroups specifically. So as we look towards benchmark number three for 2019, 2020, it's our recommendation that we actually increase the stakes, go from B or better to A or better. We believe we've identified opportunities to better meet the needs of our students, and we're willing to be held publicly accountable to the fact that we're doing that. So we have been successful the last two school years in relationship to gap closure and believe that we can continue to close the gap and help all of our students to be extremely successful on a daily basis. Benchmark number four is graduate students who are college and career-ready. So there's two parts to this specific benchmark that the board will recall. The first is to earn the A letter grade specifically for the graduation rate, which clearly we have done as a school district. We maintain higher levels of achievement. Don't agree with all the bureaucracy on how the graduation rate is calculated. I didn't agree with it when I was at the department. I don't agree with it now, but it's impossible to get 100%, which is ridiculous, but it's how the cohort is calculated. So we met it. It's important. Our kids do extremely well in graduation. I just think the measures fall. The second part is the class of 2019 will earn an ACT mean score that's 20% higher than the state average, as reported by the ACT College writing this report. This report is not back. We do not have it. Dr. Mamiya has been unable to get a firm answer on when we should expect to receive it. We've tried, but I can't publicly report on it because I don't know the outcome. It's not here yet. For graduation, I talked about it. There's a four-year calculation, a five-year calculation, and the key in the calculation is you had to enter in the fall of 2014 for the four-year and then the five-year, the fall of 2013. And if you entered and did not commence four years later, you count against me. Even if you withdrew for legitimate reasons and your parents moved to a different state, you count against us because you did not walk across the stage. That's how no school district ever gets to 100%. That's how it's calculated. So it's a cohort in 14 and 13. The Prepared for Success measure illustrates several different things for the state of Ohio and changes to the local report card that came online. For in the 18-19 data, 86.4 of our students, the 18th highest percentage in the state of Ohio. When you look at Prepared for Success specifically, so we have extremely high results for the state of Ohio overall. Forty-five or forty-five, excuse me, 46.5% of our graduates earned an honors diploma. It's the 16th highest percentage in the state based upon the reports that are available to us. 86.4% for the Prepared for Success measure, again, was the 18th highest in the state. The 66.4% of the graduates earned a remediation free score on the ACT or the SAT, which again is also the 18th highest in the state of Ohio. So we've dug into the data to try to look at what's available in comparison to the other highest achieving school districts, and we're doing extremely well in Prepared for Success. For benchmark four, as we look towards 2019, 20, we're recommending maintaining the A for the graduation rate. However, based upon previous conversations with the Board of Education, as we look to transitioning from the ACT to the SAT as the state-administered exam that's provided pursuant to Ohio Vice Code, we're actually looking to modify the second bullet for next year for this current school year for reporting next September. So students in the class of 2020 taking the ACT or SAT will earn a mean score that's at least 20% higher than the state average, as reported by the ACT College writing this report or the SAT cohort annual report. And then lastly, new this year, we're actually proposing changes that were, because of the realignment, when we have talked about going to the SAT and everything that it can do for vertical alignment for curriculum and learning and understanding outcomes and potential for kids, we're actually gonna administer the PSAT to all students in eighth grade, as well as the SAT to all juniors in the 2019-20 school year. So we'll no longer, the state provided test in the 11th grade, beginning with this year's juniors will become the SAT. And then we added, our current ninth, 10th, and 11th graders already have access to the PSAT. We're adding eighth grade to give us the longitudinal vertical alignment that we're looking at for data to help us understand even more than what we currently do in relationship to academic achievement and potential of students. For course placement is one of the features that actually the PSAT can be used for, for predictors, to help kids understand their potential of how to get to that AP course or perhaps a college credit plus course that he or she may not be considering, but the data proves otherwise. So that will be a longitudinal change that'll be introduced this year. All eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders will have access to the PSAT. The eighth grade test is being added at no cost to the families because we believe it's that valuable, that we want the data for every student to be able to sit for the exam. The state does provide the SAT free of charge to the juniors. So for benchmark number five, it's enhanced school culture, social emotional well-being. We met this. We did administer student climate surveys specifically for social emotional learning and substance potential use during the 2018-19 school year to measure specific information from students. We're modifying this slightly for this upcoming school year that age-appropriate student surveys will be still administered, but specifically the substance use survey will be administered in grades seven, nine, and 11. Kids have told us year-over-year fatigue on the survey. This SEL survey provides very concrete data about accessing specific well-being programs, so that will continue to be all students in grades three through 12. But we are going to back off and go to an off-grade level in relationship to substance use survey based upon the data and information received from students, and we'll only administer that in grades seven, nine, and 11. So that's the change for 2019, 20, the first bullet. The second bullet, we've talked about the last two years about administering the surveys, so it really comes down to the so what? What are we doing with it? So we actually implement programming based upon the surveys. So we're actually adding that from an accountability perspective to actually implement age-appropriate student programs, including the R factor, to enhance school and district climate, culture, and well-being because district climate, district culture, and overall well-being of students directly relate to academic achievement levels as retained by kids. So publicly to be accountable for it. Benchmark number six is on fiscal sustainability within for fiscal management across the school district. Our goal for fiscal year 19 was to reduce line item 4.5 to the five-year forecast that Becky will introduce again next month for board adoption in November as part of the five-year cycle. 1% of expenditures to total at least $627,000. We exceeded that goal for this year. We're very proud to report through hard work, due diligence, and effort across the school district, we did meet that goal. And for 2019, 2020, we're still proposing that it stays the same. For the last two years, we've had a 1% reduction goal. It's not always simple, but we're still trying to find ways across our entire learning organization, when you have a $60 million budget, to find opportunities for minimal savings. But a $600,000 savings in one year of the budget means a $3 million savings over the course of the five years. So we're trying to look to the long-term future aspirations of the school district. How do we continue to demonstrate fiscal health and sustainability to our community, but at the same time, recognize the needs within a school district? So there will become a point in time that this may not be possible, but we don't think we're there yet. So we're slowly making some changes, but producing minimal or some savings in some cases that contribute towards this. So we're recommending that it stays the same for 2019, 2020. The dollar amount decreases because for the last two years, we've had the 1% savings, so the decrease has happened within the budget. So it's a lower dollar amount for 2019, 2020 based upon the cost savings today. Benchmark seven is for community engagement and stakeholder satisfaction. You will recall, last year, we had a goal to administer the annual community survey as well as the staff climate survey. We did do both of those through staff personnel and associates for the community survey for random sample, and then we also did the staff climate survey through Hanover. It is our expectation that for the 2019, 2020 school year, the staff climate survey will continue through Hanover and be administered in May. However, for this year, because we just did the community survey, we're recommending a parent survey that focuses dominantly on all things related to educational quality, school culture, communications. They add is student services, climate, or fiscal management. And the student services is to be responsive to feedback that was received through the community survey or honestly conversations with Board of Education members or administrators to go back to our really parents and ask questions about the wide variety of student services that are offered, from school counseling to transportation to nursing to clinic aides to food services to custodials to restroom cleanliness to anything you want to think about as a student service. We have not surveyed parents regarding student services for really close to five years in detail. So we're proposing that that actually becomes the parent survey for the 2019, 2020 school year to understand more about what parents understand in accessing those programs that were actually created for kids. And then the last piece is to be responsive to the community survey, so implement at least three strategies during the 2019-20 school year to increase school district awareness and engagement of senior residents based upon, our senior residents, adults without children enrolled, and plain township residents based upon community survey results received. So although this is extremely specific in my conversations, both with the board, but specifically Mr. McClellan, his board president, during our leadership conversations, we talked about the disaggregation of the data. There's three very specific populations that felt disconnected from the school district. So how can we increase our efforts to help them receive information, learn about, and understand incredible things that are happening in our school district on a daily basis, but specifically the senior citizens, parents or adults in the community without children enrolled in our school district, which is somewhere around 65 to 70%, and then plain township residents specifically. So overall, just so you have a snapshot, so we have public accountability for the local report cards. These are the pictures that are available from the state. This is the information that was received when local report cards were distributed. So it shows you our overall district letter grade of an A, as well as the individual indicator grades for the specific components that I reviewed at the district level. Then additionally, we'll provide you access to the building. So this is New Albany Early Learning Center. Again, overall, A letter grade is not rated with the exception of achievement. New Albany Primary School, overall, A letter grade, again, not rated with the exception of achievement, improving at-risk readers for K through 3 and gap closure, but extremely strong. New Albany Intermediate School, overall, A letter grade by the department, and again, achievement, progress, and gap closure are the three components that are publicly reported based upon the assessments that are administered in those grade levels. New Albany Middle School, a B as an overall letter grade, again, with achievement, progress, and gap closure as the three components. New Albany High School, again, A overall letter grade with the achievement, progress, and gap closure, as well as the graduation rate and Prepared for Success. So it has five of the component grades are publicly reported based upon the makeup of the report card and the components applicability to high school-level students. So the focus, as we continue to look forward, hasn't changed. As a school district and in my conversations individually or collectively with you as a board, it's really that all employees will be accountable for implementing research-based practices, including a rigorous and aligned curriculum, common assessments, focused instruction, and data-driven decisions to achieve the best academic and data-driven decisions to achieve the best academic and developmental outcomes for every student within a fiscally sustainable budget. That is our work on a daily basis. Graphically, I illustrated to staff as the why, the how, and the what. We are here every single day to contribute to student achievement, student growth, and student well-being. That's our why. Our what is this curriculum assessment, instruction, and social emotional learning needs of students. And then that's specifically the how we do that work, and then the what questions. There's four essential questions in reality that we're asking on a daily basis to contribute to increase academic outcomes for kids. So our response, as we look towards the 2019-2020 school year, is continued clarity of purpose. The goal sign hasn't changed, the work is the same. We have to do more of it to maintain higher levels of standards. It's absolutely possible, but it's continued clarity of purpose. We have deliberate and defined action, and we're working on action plans right now. Leadership worked on that tonight, as I had said before, the board meeting, specifically to how do we increase academic achievement outcomes for all students year-over-year? That is the expectation. We will implement the guaranteed and viable curriculum that's in place across our school district, and again, there's curriculum cycle for revising that. Teach rigorous and standard-aligned curriculum deeply so that our kids actually understand the content and can apply it well. Develop and use common assessments, so again, it's not random. We actually have comparative data that makes it a safe conversation for Debbie to tell Michael, as an English teacher as an example, that there's something that she can do better than I can, but it's a nice, safe conversation to understand how did you better meet the needs of your kids and what can I learn from you as a professional, because that's why we are here. We're a professional team. We evaluate student and enrichment opportunities. We will monitor progress regularly for corrective actions. We have ongoing classroom walkthroughs with feedback specifically related to those walkthroughs. Analyze data to make data-driven decisions and implement and integrate the R factor into the school culture, because school culture directly contributes to our expectations, what's happening on a daily basis within and across our school campus, both inside and outside the classroom. So although the benchmarks I proposed for the 2019-20 school year may be rigorous in nature, we absolutely believe, and I think that both Phil and Paul, and you might want to talk about this in your comments if you have, if you choose to, in our conversations with the teachers, representation when we met last week, the plea, absolutely believe that the trajectory will continue. We are doing the right work for kids on an everyday basis. We absolutely believe our kids can and will continue to perform at higher levels, and we should have no reason not to have those expectations. The leadership team as a whole, and most of them are here tonight, have those expectations, as I do believe the faculty and staff across our entire learning organization do as well with you as the Board of Education. So it starts at the top through governors with you, and we are confident we can and will continue to improve. Questions or comments?
Just a few dozen or so. Imagine that. I'm gonna get some water, so you start talking. Just to repeat, I mean, this is just, this is spectacular. When we started down this journey four years ago together, we said we would celebrate success, and we already had, we already stood up and celebrated, but take the moment. It's important to recognize that this is hard, and celebrating success is important. Are you done yet? Give yourselves a round of the proud applause, we already have.
They've celebrated, they just haven't told you that.
It's important. Would you mind going back to that previous slide? So this is textbook leadership. There have been textbooks written on this. Everything in there, you'll find in one. And just to take you back very briefly, we started this four years ago in January, February of 2016, that this board decided on what the statement of purpose would be and hired a superintendent to accomplish it. We were 63rd in the state that year and hadn't really moved in years. This result of being 17th is not an accident. It is because of clarity and purpose. When you look at our statement of purpose, it is clear. It hasn't changed. If you haven't read it lately, which I'm curious, you don't need to because you hear it all the time, but if you haven't looked at the definitions lately, it's worth it because this is in there. Michael's comments about how when there's a challenge somewhere, it isn't about looking for who to blame, the challenge is identified by the data, and there's a conversation about what's best for kids, right? What's happening in an individual classroom that we can make a difference, not me, that the educators can make a difference in, and then there's a conversation about what to do about it, and then there are results, and it's good for kids. I mean, we set out to clarify that the goal was to, was to create a culture of accountability that achieves the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student, and make it about the kids, and it's about the kids. I mean, it's just, it's phenomenal. You know, I could go on and on, I probably, I'll probably drone on and on, so I'll try not to, but it's also important to say that we put compensation to achieving targets. We did what people said could not be done. We did it in a way that was consistent with the data on education, which is that educators view themselves as part of a team, not individuals. So when we set up the performance compensation, it was as a team, and as a team, every single employee in this district has the exact same goals. Academic excellence, doing so within a sustainable budget, every single employee, teachers, staff, bus drivers, custodians, every single employee in this district, including us on the board, including all the administrators, everybody has the same goals. Everybody wins. It's, it is a privilege to authorize the payment of those bonuses for achievement of goals because that's how it should be. We said that regardless of what happened, we hit targets, we pay. That's how it should be. So congratulations, thank you. It's, it's awesome. It really is awesome.
Thank you. Who wants to follow that?
I just want to say thank you to everyone involved for the incredible hard work I know has gone into all of these achievements, and also I feel you leaning into the targets for this coming year and that they are aggressive, and none of us take that lightly. We know that this is really hard work and, and you know, the bar keeps getting higher, and it continues to be challenging for you to keep moving that bar higher. And I just want to thank you for all of the dedication that has gone into the results we've already achieved and also striving, you know, to do even better next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Go team. It is a team. Thank you. Thank you.
I know Phil, I mean, just one word, a couple words, I promise. I'll say it again, thank you. I know we have a high-performance culture here, and in every year, the bar gets higher, and we start taking things for granted. I've worked in one of those cultures, so it's hard, and you got to remember, say thank you every time, and reiterate it again and again. We can't say enough to everyone in the New Albany Quinbolder School District. Michael mentioned the discussion we had with the alternate conversation committee, and it was just really a meeting that was just fun to attend, to really sit in that room and see everybody from board, from the leadership, from our finance team, from our data team, from the teachers, from plea leadership, really sit there, and I was sort of watching it like I was in third, out of body experience, and this is incredible. This is awesome to see everybody aligned, everybody confident, everybody looking at these goals and saying, wow, look how far we've come, but not being afraid of the challenge of, okay, we can do this top 10 thing, and we can get there. We dug into the data and looked at the other districts that have gone from, say, for like Chagrin Falls from 25 to 12 to three in three years. We looked at the PI and saw where the opportunity was to get in that top 10 with a couple different points, talked through strategies to get there, different pieces of data that we can really have an impact on, and things we're going to do differently this year to try to help us get there. So it just really is fun. I mean, Phil says it again and again, it's about the kids, and I know that's why I got involved, was like, let's get a great academic outcome for our kids. So yeah, I'm about to get choked out because it really is fun to watch everybody, and again, to the teachers out there, to the leadership team here, again, thank you all for everything you've been involved in. It's just really fun to be a part of it, and let's try and do it again next year.
We're going to. Don't go anywhere, Michael. If I don't say anything, people think I don't appreciate.
This is the pressure, peer pressure. And I hate John, I guess you have to go too.
So I definitely appreciate all the efforts, super impressed, grateful for all of the hard work that goes in, but I'm not surprised a lot to what Phil was talking about. I mean, there's a very well-thought-out plan here, great execution, and I think what, you know, Michael and team have laid out for 2019-2020, we can expect ongoing success, so thank you everyone.
Thank you. And Mr. McClellan.
Yeah, I guess.
Starts with a standing ovation.
Yeah. We're impressive.
You get the bookends.
That's right.
That's the parliamentary way.
I guess. I guess, I guess there's really not much to add here, everybody said it, but I know we're sitting here tonight, and the cameras on us, camera really should be pointed over there at all of you, and Jackie, you're representing the teachers, several hundred teachers that we have here, the work that goes on a daily basis on behalf of kids. And then let's not forget the kids. I mean, we have 5,000, how many now?
Fifty-two.
5,052 that are putting in the effort every day, and we can't make this happen unless they are, they are here and ready to learn and willing to learn and ready to achieve, and then that goes back to the parents and the environment that you have at home to support what we're trying to do here. So this is a community effort. We were fortunate to be here as representatives of the community, but man, the congratulations goes all the way around. And so I don't know if you want to preview Friday night, a homecoming football game, we're going to celebrate this again, I think, again. Everybody in the community deserves some congratulations here.
So we sent out a staff invite to what John's referring to. Homecoming is Friday, so the parade clearly is going to happen, but after the parade, once the first quarter ends, we're inviting all staff in the school district, regardless of role and function, to participate by building level, and really just a thank you from the community, to recognize them in front of probably 4,000 people that will be at the football game on Friday night, and say thank you to them and their collective efforts as a staff, but also to thank our students. So we'll do some PA announcements, both for students and parents that will also be in attendance, but want to publicly recognize the efforts of staff, and because we have several staff members that are participating in the homecoming parade, we're going to do it after the first quarter at the home football game on Friday. So we look forward to recognizing them again publicly as well, to say thank you, and that's really what it's about, is to say thank you. You work extremely hard, and you increase outcomes for kids, and at the end of the day, that's what this is all about, students first, and it is hard work, but we are absolutely capable as a learning organization because we have incredible people that come here every single day with the right thing, please. Thank you all.
Our next item on the agenda tonight is board policy. We have five policies to review. Mr. Sorensen?
So Board of Education members, these are the second reading of the policies I presented at the last Board of Education meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions. There's been no modifications, no changes, it's the same information we have on.
Any questions?
Mr. Sorensen, you mind, on the Internet Athletic Athletics Policy?
Yep.
Could you give us an overview of anything that's changing?
All right, so it's, if you're opening the attachments, it's 2431. So this was updated in 2019 based upon rules and regs that came out of the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and specifically looking at incomplete grades and what it would mean in relationship to a student's continued eligibility within participation in extracurricular activities for Internet Athletic Athletics. That's the dominant change. It really just went through and further defined the restoration of an incomplete grade. So if a student is issued an incomplete, there's now guidance that's been issued from the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and my presumption is because of something probably controversial. That's typically what resulted in it getting revised to make recommendations for what that actually would then be put into policy. So that's the dominant change within the policy itself. Thank you.
One, one thing is to point out on this, too. I know that the, there's a minimum grade point average, which some people may look at and say, wow, that's pretty low, but I know from talking with Richie Wiltonhouse, our athletic director, and a number of other folks in the athletic department, most of our teams have a very higher standard for their participation, but that is the minimum that's required. I know what you're saying. It's straight up, I mean, it's a thing. Anything else? All right, that takes us to our first opportunity for public participation. With no one, we have a board and action item on the agenda tonight. You all know that the McCoy Center being a kind of a joint school, city, parks entity, we have the ability to appoint certain members of that board. One of our appointees' term has expired, and so we have a person that we would like to add to the board. So I'd like to have a motion and a second to approve Heather Mayling as a appointee to the McCoy Center, Community Center for the Arts Board. It's a three-year term effective January 1, 2020. We'll run through December 31, 2022. That would be as one of the three school appointments to the board. There, Skaloski, overall.
Vice President Darrow.
Pardon me. Is there any discussion on? Thank you. With none.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Skaloski?
Yes.
Mr. Gomis?
Yes.
Chairman McClellan?
Yes.
Now to treasurer's items. Could I have a motion, please, on treasurer's items A through Z?
Second.
Second, Skaloski, Mr. Gomis?
Thank you. We are approving, or hopefully will approve, July and August financials, we're only two months into the fiscal year, so we are materially on plan for both revenue and expenditures. And then we have, we need to approve the new Student Wellness and Success Fund. That's the money that we're getting from the Department of Education. They are not running that through the foundation or general fund. They're having that go for a separate fund. We have to approve that fund. So that's creation of that. Appropriation modifications, we have six on the agenda. You can see the explanations to the right of those. Pretty much just increase in revenue for the CCIP aligning to that. And then I have First Federal Bank for a depository agreement. That's just in case they happen to have anything in the future for investment purposes.
Any questions, Mr. Jenkins?
Can you just share with everyone the amount that we were given for the Student Wellness and Success?
The first year is about $167,000, and then the second year, there's about $238,000, so a total of about $404,000 over the two-year period.
And we think this two-year allocation is kind of a one-time thing.
That's all that's addressed in the financial budget. My opinion, just my opinion, is that once we get to the end of this two-year period, because we don't have to have our plan approved, but we do have to report the expenditures, and so I think it will just depend statewide how districts decide to use those funds, whether or not they end up either being more restrictive than they are now or whether or not they continue. So we, Michael has been meeting with his team to go through what are the possibilities, what are we trying to achieve? We are not planning to supplant, and that is where we're paying for programs that are already existing. We are planning to use the money as we believe it was intended for new programming to help students with performance and success. They haven't identified exactly what they're going to do yet. In fact, we had a meeting today to work through that. The funds in the current year do not have been spent in the current year, they can carry it over to the second year. I don't know that we'll wait that long to implement some of the programs. I don't know that we'll wait that long to implement some of the programming, but right now, the short answer is, it's only addressed in the two-year financial budget. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Newmaw?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. Now, the superintendent's items, A through D, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Newmaw, Mr. Bush, Mr. Sawyer.
Board of Education members, letter A this evening for personnel or standard employee action items for acceptance of resignations, replacements, or hire, and/or contractual terms and conditions pursuant to the negotiated agreements with Plainmunder Education Association or the Ohio Association of School Employees. Let's screw that up. Oopsie. I think that, it's like, oopsie. Contractual requirements for action. Letter B for general business this evening, the most important action item, in my opinion, is letter A. It is the approval of 2019, 2020 Continuous Improvement Plan that we get talked about for several months in preparation for tonight, as well as a few field trip recommendations that are moving forward. Letter C, donations, as always, we're very thankful for the generosity of others and the donations they make to our school district. There's two significant ones tonight related to scholarships, both for the high school as well as international trips for the middle school. And then letter D this evening are the adoption of board policies that I previously talked about.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Sawyer?
I just wanted to comment again on the donations, there are two fantastic donations, $10,000 each from New Albany Realty, and from Amy Hawk and Scott V. Could you talk about how those scholarships are administered?
So the high school scholarships were specifically for the end of the 2018, 19 school year, so the students received, were five scholarships awarded by the New Albany Realty Scholarships through the Senior Recognition Programs. Students fill out applications for scholarships from the Real Trust Association, and they were actually selected. So this is to the account for the money that was received. Then the second one, for the international trips, we have a very generous family within New Albany that believes in the spirit of continuous learning outside of the classroom, and want to afford opportunities for students that might have other financial difficulties, the opportunity to participate in the international trips that we do through EF. So this family specifically sponsors scholarships to offset costs that a family may not be able to bear, in order for students actually get to participate in one of the EF experiences. They value it that much, based upon personal experience within their family, that they want to sponsor other students to have their opportunity to participate outside of the classroom during the summer. So wonderful, wonderful examples of others helping kids.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Newmaw?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. Second opportunity for public participation. With none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Darrow, Ms. Kalanowski, roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Newmaw?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. We are adjourned. Our next meeting is Monday, October 7.